Yeah. Oh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special, the July 22nd, 2025 special. Is it the, no, it's July 31st. Special meeting study session. It is 4:32. Ms. Tucker, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Governing Board's member, governing board members present, governing board president, Mr. Kyle Clayton, governing board vice president, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, governing board members, Ms. Tamilia Gosa-Chapa, Ms. Jenny Abbott-Bayardi, and Mr. Bill Adams.
Thank you. Can I have an adoption of the July 31st, 2025 special meeting agenda? All signed.
I'll make a question.
All those in favor? Aye. No. And next, we will move to... Okay. We will turn it over to Dr. Hightower.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the governing board. Thank you so much for being here, for your dedication. I know it's been a lot of meetings even prior to me joining. And then, as I've joined, I think we've already had four in one month. So, thank you again. Just really quick, just a quick question that you can share with your partner next to you. And what are your hopes and expectations for this upcoming 25, 26 school year? So, if you can take a couple of minutes just to share, what are, what are those hopes that you have for the school year, for our school district? And I'll set the timer. Thank you. Who would, who would like to share their hopes and expectations with the group?
One of my hopes and dreams this school year is I would really love to see our students really own their leadership and know that they deserve to take up space no matter what their background is. And I've definitely seen that with the different things that we have done in this district. And so, I'm just really excited to see them own that leadership and take up space.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gosa-Chapa. Anyone else? Ms. Mora? Ms. Aberbayardi?
I shared, I want to see joy back in the classroom. I want to see joy in our teachers as they're learning. I want to see our students excited about what they're learning. I think that's one thing we did here with our student voice. Some of the groups we met with last year, they said things like they wish their, it looked like their teachers were having fun alongside them. And so, how do we get that back? And we've seen some of the professional development that's been happening with our teachers. And there was an excitement and there was an energy in the room. And they were having a lot of fun learning. And so, how do we get that back into our classrooms where, you know, it's not just covering curriculum, it's not just doing standards, but it's learning along together and having a great time as we're doing that, so.
Thank you so much. Would someone else like to share? Dr. Bailey?
I think what Mr. Adams and I were sharing is that we want to make sure that our students are in a safe and secure environment, no matter what the outside environment is. But not only our students, but our staff, that they feel as though that they're in that safe and secure environment for at least the seven, seven and a half hours or eight hours. So, that was one of our top priorities.
One of the things when we were talking besides the joy, which I always enjoy, pardon, pardon the pun, but also is hope. Just, you know, for this year to be hopeful, that there are great things to come. And I think it actually ties in with joy. You know, we talk a lot about joy is a choice and I, and hope is a choice. It's not just a thing that just happens. And so, that's one of the things we were talking about, too.
Thank you all. Ms. Gosa-Chapa?
Thank you so much, President Clayton. So, as you guys all know, I'm just going to take a really quick 30 seconds to kind of explain this really quick. I'm autistic and so visuals work very well for me. And there are times when we use jargon and different things. And I just wanted to make sure that while I'm also making sure questions are getting answered, that I'm also able to ask those questions necessarily without like disrupting. So, I created some little signs. If you all would like to take a look at them so you can understand what these pictures mean, I have the jargon giraffe. We use a lot of jargon here in education. And so, I figured this would be a really quick way if we're having a discussion and like abbreviation is used. If I toss this up, I'm hoping you guys see it without it disrupting the conversation too much. So, we can get an explanation of that. Sometimes my brain buffers. And in order for me to center myself a little bit back so I can come back to what I was trying to say in a quicker fashion, it's a lot easier for me to hold this up so you can know that I'm buffering instead of me trying to tell you that I'm buffering while also trying to buffer and get back to the point. And then, this one should be pretty self-explanatory. I hope you guys all got a chance to look at these signs. This is a celebration. We share a lot of things that are worth celebrating. And so, rather than clapping, wobbling, and being inconvenienced to other people, I decided to make a sign so you guys could know that I was happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, I would like to welcome Dr. Sinto Ramos to lead the study session.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to be with you. It's good to see. I've got it on. Yeah. Is, is it working, Shannon?
You can hear it still a little far.
No? Yes? Okay. There it is. No? Yeah. All right. Well, good afternoon. Been anxious and excited about getting back together to continue the work that was begun when you drafted goals and guardrails. I've watched your meetings. I've coded your meetings. And so, been really, really excited about being able to show this space together again. With that said, I want to continue with what Dr. Hightower's kind of gotten us off the ground with. I'd like you to just make a note for yourself. How much, how much ti, well, now let me back up. When your time is done on this board or your time is done serving the school district as an employee, what do you hope? What do you hope you would have accomplished during that time? I'll give you, give you about a minute or so to write a couple of notes. When your time is done, serving on the board or serving as an employee, what, what do you hope you would have accomplished when your time comes to an end? Got it. The next, the next question I'd like you to, to consider. As you replay the tape, as, as you replay the tape of January through May, how, how much time do you think, like a percentage point, how much time do you feel that you, you all spent monitoring student, student outcomes? Just take a wild guess. For yourself, write that down. The next one, after you've taken an estimation of what that percentage may have been, what, what were you able to do in creating conditions in this room in order to narrow the focus on student achievement? What were you able to do to help narrow the focus in this room to focus on student achievement?
Since January?
January to May, yes. And then, finally, what got in the way? What world wins? Did you bring in or did you participate in that allowed a lack of focus on student achievement in this room? Now, the first time many of us met, we, we did some mindset work. The prompts were these for those that were able to go and those that have not. I'll ask you to, to just take a moment to reflect on the prompts. The first one is identify a choice or behavior that you've made in the last three months or six, let's say, six months, where you may have made it harder for Washington Elementary School District to achieve its vision. Again, the prompt is, and I'm not going to ask you to answer. We got hot mics. But these will be for self-reflection. What choice or behavior, at least one, choice or behavior that I made in the last six months where I may have made it harder for Washington Elementary School District to achieve its vision? Now, often, some of the most common ones that we hear from boards, it's, "I, I didn't prepare for the meeting. I didn't read my packet." Got it? Okay. Others say, "I'm stretched out too thin. I've got a lot on my plate, a lot of things going on. I haven't been able to, to focus as much as I would like to." There's all kinds of behaviors and choices that, that we hear. But just to kind of get your mind going as to what that may, may look like. The second prompt for self-reflection is, "In that moment when I made that choice and behaved that way," so let's just say, I'm going to model for you. "I'm, I'm not preparing as much as I could for board meetings." The second prompt is, "What's the benefit to me in that moment when I make that choice to behave that way?" For example, I could say that the benefit to me in that moment is that I got to do what I wanted to do. I got to take care of other things. I got to go to my kid's game. I got to go enjoy dinner with my partner. There's all kinds of reasons. But just for clarity, there is always a benefit. And usually, if you're, if you have a challenge coming up with a benefit, it's in that subconscious part that I want to invite you to try to bring forward to the consciousness. And then, the third one is usually a little bit easier to identify. It's, "When I make that choice or behave that way, what's the potential cost to your students?" So, if I'm procrastinating, I'm not preparing, I'm in high conflict with people, I'm showing up late to things, I'm not attending, I'm... Whatever those are, I can probably make a connection that the cost to students is, I'm not fully prepared for board meetings. And let's be clear that in order for me to enjoy a benefit, someone has to pay a cost. And oftentimes, the cost here, we would say, is going to be the students. And then, finally, the final prompt, it's, "What am I pretending when I do that?" So, when I used to be a board member, and that very much, all, most of those apply to me, if not all, when I was not preparing for board meetings, I was pretending that I was still a good board member. I was pretending that I was, that I could wing it in the boardroom. And what I've came to realize in this work is that I didn't fully understand the level of disrespect I had for my leadership team back then because I didn't understand how much time it was taking staff to prepare for board meetings. I didn't understand all the connections of what you all are doing on a day-to-day basis. And for me to show up completely unprepared for my board meeting was a sign of not only disrespect for them, but as it, as I became more aware that my choices and my behaviors were patterns that I was bringing in from the outside world into the boardroom. I had the best of intentions. I was in volunteer role. I wasn't getting paid. We say you do this for free 99, board members. And so, then to have that kind of an expectation, it's not like anyone ever gave it to me. But it was when I went through this training that made me very uncomfortable during this process. And yet, it was obviously what I needed at that time in order to narrow my focus. I don't want you to answer the questions that I gave you. I just wanted you to self-reflect. If you haven't received a report from me, I'll make sure that I get it to all of you. You'll have the percentages of where you have spent your time from January to May. It will have updated June and July because y'all just reviewed some data last week. Powerful that staff and board are, are calibrating and working towards, "How does the board better receive data? How does the superintendent leadership team better communicate?" Because as we've also learned is, leadership teams, let me put it this way. If there's gotcha governance in the boardroom, meaning that board members are throwing curveballs at the superintendent, we know that those kinds of behaviors are not conducive to creating a brave space to have a real legitimate conversation of what the data is saying. Oftentimes, board members across the country complain about what they call data dumps. Data dumps is just page after page after page. And what you'll notice in student outcomes focused governance, you could look at some of the neighboring districts who are doing this work, they average five to seven pages and they're very simple. And anybody can read it, including a community member. And that way, there's clarity and there's transparency. And the board can also have a very, very good, robust conversation with the leadership team. In essence, you want to know what's on the screen, what's working and what's not working. It's that simple. This doesn't have to be rocket science. And so, what we know from the research is that in order for a board to work together and a superintendent team, there's no shortcuts through this. We, we got to do the work. We, we got it. We got a, we, it's what the A characteristics of effective boards from NSBA. Number one, first, the board has to have a vision. And we call those goals, board goals. Number two, you got to have values that you've identified that you want to protect, which are your guardrails. And if you've got those two things, you've given the superintendent the goalpost that she needs to work on to go get her job done. But a board that has not identified goals and guardrails, you got a superintendent who's working in the dark right now. And I know that you're not because I know that you've, you've drafted them and your superintendent has an idea of what they are. And I, I think you've learned this board, even in the meantime, the staff has still been doing the work. The campuses, the teachers, right? Everyone's still been doing the work. What I submit to you is this thought that when you as a board adopt at the minimum your goals, you're about to open up a whole pathway of this all amazing communication between you and the staff because you would have set the targets that your superintendent desperately needs. And the last one is the one that I'm asking you, the questions to consider. Board, if you're not setting goals, and there's a confusion. A lot of boards tend to think that superintendents set the goals. That is not how actually how this works, and I'll explain in a second. You as the board are supposed to set the goals because you're the owners of the system, meaning that no matter who's in that superintendent seat, you're always in control of the school system. And boards that give up that power, you allow role confusion, which is the number one thing in the literature. You as board members then allow role confusion to enter the room. That if you let the superintendent, and if that is your hero, she-ro person, when they leave, because they won't be here forever, then the question will be, what's next? And you will usually see a dip. And we don't want to have that dip because if you're in control board and you're sustaining this work, you're running a show. That is what we believe. And all of this embedded with your community, that's why I'm grateful for you for the work that you've done, engage in your community. You're the experts of your people in your neighborhoods, in your, in Washington. And that's why it says right there that community has got to be embedded from beginning and not just that one time. Your job is also going to be to educate your community, your parents, your students, your teachers, and everyone why this work is important. Let me do this part, then I want to take a pause and get questions and comments. But I want to make sure we're all on the same, same language. I want you to pretend that you're the owner of a football team. What's the outcome that you want? Superbowl? Yeah. That is the outcome you want. And before the game even starts, what do you, what do you need before the game even? Before the game even starts, what do I need in order to win the game? Players? Mm-hmm. Players, coaches, game plan? What else you need?
Players? Like a game plan?
Game plan, yeah. Helmets, equipment? Are you going to transport players? Transportation? You going to feed them? Need food? Good. Would somebody please read what inputs are for us?
Inputs are resources and activities invested in a particular program, process, or strategy usually knowable at the beginning of a cycle.
Yeah. The, let's go ahead and shorten up our time by connecting this to education. What is the outcome that you want in education?
Students thrive?
Students to thrive? Yep. That it?
You want them to do well when they leave.
Absolutely. You want them to do well when they leave. You want them better prepared when they move on to the next system, right? Got it? So, in other words, you're, what did I hear? Today's first day of school for some? Meet the teacher. Got it? Right now, all the school systems that are getting ready to do day one, they had a lot of discussions about inputs. What are examples of inputs for the school system in order for you to be able to win the game?
Bus drivers.
Bus drivers? Teachers?
Nutrition services, custodians.
Good. What else do you need? Dr. Hightower says everything. What are examples of everything?
Thank you so much. Amazing teachers for the students. Teachers that remain in the profession for the students. But it's, it's everything. It's everything from our governing board, having that mission, that vision, the goals, to every single staff member that's working towards those goals.
Got it. You need curriculum. You need all that good stuff. You need professional development. You got to get your PLCs going. All of those, my friends, are inputs in school systems. Budget is an input. All of those conversations that you had from January until the adoption of the budget was conversations likely about inputs. What do you need? What can you afford? Because we want to get the best possible outcomes for children. Good stuff. What do we know at halftime?
Where we are.
Where we are. How do we know where we are? The score. That's right, the scoreboard. And so, would somebody please read what outputs are for us?
The result of a particular set of inputs, usually noble in the midst of a cycle, a measure of the implementation of the program, process, or strategy.
Yeah. So, outputs is the scoreboard lets us know if we're winning or losing. What are we doing if we're winning?
Keep doing it or maybe make modifications to make sure we are preparing for how the team's going to do in the second half. So, be, with some foresight.
Yeah. What if we're losing? We need to adjust, Dr. Hightower says. Monitor and adjust. That's right. What else?
You're, you're also monitoring, even if you're ahead or you're winning, you may not be where you want to be. It could be too close. So, what adjustments do we need to make to make sure that we stay ahead and reach? Like, I don't want it to be just a squeak-by-win. You want it to be decisive.
Got it. What are samples of outputs in the school system? For, for the board members that are educators, this is, this is usually your, your jam. But for people who have not, are not familiar with education, this is, this is like a, this is a gap. What are examples of outputs in the school system?
The mid-year testing. Also, what I was thinking... Also, what I was thinking before was like, you want to make sure that you don't have any injuries that might, you know, throw off your game plan. So you might have to prepare for that. So you want to do a check-in to make sure that things are, you have the right people in the right place and the supports and so forth. So that you can reach your outcomes.
Yeah, that's right. So your outputs are also what we call formative assessments. You're monitoring board. If during the year, you're not monitoring student achievement, you're not monitoring the growth, you're not asking the questions, then you're missing a big opportunity. And that's one of your biggest roles as a board member. The thing is that you want to see which inputs are working and which ones are not. And when you're using these assessments, you're able to figure out if we're moving the needle or not. You also, in this process, some of the districts nearby and throughout the country have realized that sometimes they have too many outputs. And they're overtesting. And so there's reasons for why each one may have in that situation. So there are a lot of districts who begin to do less outputs because they come to realize that they're not predictive of the outcomes that they're trying to get to. What happens is that the system gets wonky and the right doesn't always know what the left is doing. And if the board isn't leading by example by monitoring and asking those questions, then things just continue to go because it's always been done that way. And the last one, what do we know at the end of the game? Yeah, did we win or lose? And so we call those outcomes. It's the impact of the program or strategy usually knowable at the end of the cycle and measure the effect of the intended beneficiary. This is why your goals are so important, my friends. This is why your goals are so important. That you've gone to the community, you've listened to students, you've listened to teachers, you've listened to leaders, you've listened to folks. Because usually that is not what most people want to usually talk to you about. They usually want to talk to you about guardrails, inputs. They usually want to talk to you about the things that are agitating them. And that's what they know. Your role here in inputs? Well, let me ask, who's primarily responsible for inputs, superintendent or the board? Let's get the role confusion clear. Superintendent, correct. Why the superintendent? She's responsible for recommending the teachers, the professional development, the curriculum, all of that good stuff, right? Why? She's the expert. She's the educational expert. So then board, what's your role in inputs? Because you're not, out of this one, it's not your primary role, but you do play a role.
To make sure that she has the resources available. So we want to make sure that the budget is in alignment with the inputs to look at the outputs to then get to the outcomes.
Oh no, yes, I love that. You connected the dots. And so here with the inputs, there's a flip side of that coin. You want to ask questions about inputs, board members. Board members, the article that I've shared with you probably multiple times, the Lighthouse study talks about districts that move and districts that get stuck. Really, they're talking about boards that move and boards that get stuck. Boards that do not ask questions about inputs, your job is to vet them. And at the end of the day, you're approving or not approving inputs. If you're not convinced of an input and you're not seeing the connection as to how that's going to impact the outcome, then you have some conversations you probably want to have with superintendent. I'm not saying vote no. I'm saying if anything, that just means you probably need to go make some time to sit down with her so that she can explain to you even further why these inputs are necessary and they're so important. And what you do is you monitor along the way. Who's primarily responsible for outputs? Superintendent. What's the board's role then? If she's recommending the benchmarks, the formative assessments, then what's your role, board?
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
If she's responsible for recommending the formative assessments, the benchmarks, what they're going to use to assess what students know and are able to do, then what's the board's role?
To vet?
Yeah, to vet, absolutely. And what happens if you don't understand what you're looking at and they're using all kinds of acronyms? Then what do you do? Because look, board, let me be super, super clear with this. If you're leaving a board meeting and you don't know what the progress is towards the goal, then we're not doing progress monitoring the way it was really designed to work. We're not going to be looking at checkboxes. Really, I'm hoping to support you and you you cannot walk out of a board meeting not knowing what your data is. If you are, then when we did that mindset work, there might be some pretending associated with that. Let me model. I, when I was a board member and I left the boardroom and I got all this data in front of me and I had no idea what I was looking at and I couldn't connect it to inputs, outputs and an outcome, I was approving and rubber stamping things. And then when the scores came out at the end of the year and they weren't where we expected them to be, guess who I was wanting to blame for? The data. Superintendent. The problem here, board members, if you're not monitoring inputs and outputs and you don't get the outcomes that you want, I ask you to consider that you also share the blame with the superintendent. Because then my question to the board would be, what have you been approving all year long? And boards that do this work really well, they ask really good questions. They're not gotcha questions. They're not curveballs at superintendent. They are really designed to really understand what is going on, how do we get here, and then what's the plan? Because if we're on track to lose the game, we want to know how do we get on track to win the game? Every year that we lose, every year that we let go by and that we're not doing the work, it's another group of cohort students that move on. And you know that children that are not able to read, it gets harder and harder to get them caught up. The aggressive strategies that are necessary to get them caught up get more and more challenging as the years go by. So we only get like really legitimate, one good shot at it, which means that I can't pretend in this role. I gotta identify the benefits to me if I'm still showing up unprepared or I'm not asking questions. And I need to be clear that there's a cost and someone's paying the cost for me to enjoy that benefit. The cost is usually going to be students. You could also probably argue that it's going to be your teachers and your staff and the morale and all of that stuff. The final piece I'll say to take a pause is board, I've also shared with you, parallel processing is a real thing. That boards that don't lead by example, you create the space for everyone else around you to behave the way you do. So if I'm late to a meeting and then I'm creating a space to allow the superintendent to start her meetings late, administrators to start their meetings late, campus leaders to start their meetings late, teachers to start class late, students to show up late and so on and so forth. Leadership is hard. The mindset that we work through in this framework can be very uncomfortable. And yet, it's what we believe is conducive to creating the conditions to improve student outcomes for children. I'm going to take a pause and I want you to visit with your neighbor. You've done a lot in about 30 minutes. Visit with a neighbor about what's coming up for you as we get ready to open up the space to take a deep dive into the data. As you reflect at the prompts, any of them, what's coming up for you during this time? Visit with your neighbor. I'll give you a couple of minutes. Okay. Coming back. My hope is that in that brief overview and recap of the work that's been done to this point, keep elevating the importance of why your board goals are going to be so powerful for the rest of the school system when you've set these targets. As you're going to be doing a superintendent search, this process can make it even easier for you. So for example, districts are usually going to interview a superintendent candidate and say, you know, these are our goals. What receipts, what evidence do you have of how you've moved the needle for children? What are some inputs that have worked really well in your school systems that you've been? What are outputs that have produced the most best predictors for you? And then how would you get us to our goals within the five years? You may have candidates who are just going to shine above others and tell you, this is what I've done. Here's my receipts. Here's how we did it. Versus just, you know, I'll speak for what's true for me, like that I just like the person. That likability is important, but effectiveness and productivity is more important because that's what your children deserve. So that's one of the major things that I wanted to share with you before we take a deep, deep dive into this. And I'm going to pass it back over to President Clayton. He's going to walk us through the next part.
Thank you. So March, April and May, we had seven sessions at our school campuses kind of presenting this as well as talking to the equitable outcomes for all committee, principals, assistant principals. And Ms. Gosa-Chapa led 16 student listening sessions and coffee with the principal at Mountain View. And we also had an online survey. So now we're coming back just to, and that is all captured in packet number seven, eight. And then nine and 10 are kind of the overarching themes to condense that 20 pages of feedback down to digestible bites. And so we're just going to let, that's kind of, so you know, we want to take this community feedback, the more updated data and refine and realign our goals. So Dr. Jovanoun, if you'd like.
Thank you so much. And before Dr. Jovanoun gets started, Dr. Jovanoun is our Director of Assessment and Evaluation. She's one of the best in state. She worked for the Arizona Department of Education for many, many years. She has history on the different assessments that have been implemented in the state, state standardized assessment. Why was Ames a better assessment, more aligned to teaching and learning than what we had? So there's so much that she has, but today she's going to focus on some of the documents that you requested, President Clayton. So she's going to take us through some of the documents, not all of them, because as you all know, we had a very extensive session the last board meeting for benchmarks. So that's one that she won't get into, but she'll be able to get through the other documents. With that, Dr. Jovanoun.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hightower. As Dr. Hightower shared with you, I'm going to give you a very brief overview of resources that we prepared for you so that you're a little more informed and can feel confident about setting goals. So first off, we have this blue copy for you. This has a list of all the documents in front of you with a brief description to remind you as you go on throughout the evening, if you want to turn to a certain document. And then we also have post-it notes for you to take some notes either while I'm adding a little bit of context to some of the data for you that you don't usually see in the reports or that we typically share. You can tab your documents. You can put your post-it notes all over the table if you'd like and coincide the numbers with your number of documents. We want to make it as easy as possible. We have rulers and colored pens for you as well. Okay, to start off, the first document, all of these documents are numbered in the upper right-left corner, sorry. Upper-left corner. So I'm going to start right off with number one. Number one is a summary of the AASA results, which you'll receive a report in the near future here. But you've got a sneak preview of the results. And the first table is just an overview across all grades. I'm going to explain this one a little bit and not so much on some of the others. The second table is very, should be very familiar for you. It's a trend across years by grade with a comparison to the state. At the bottom is a look at the Faye students. The next page on the back is cohort trends. There have been some conversations at board meetings about cohorts. If you flip, yes, flip the page, right. It's front and back for you. There's a state comparison across grades and then of course, a comparison by grade, performance level of this year and the previous year. This year meaning 24, 25 school year, okay? Then the remainder of this document is math. Set up the exact same way, so I'm not going to explain it. A little bit of context I want to give you about this particular document is that you'll see on our math, we are starting to see some of the outcomes of our aligned curriculum. I ready? Very excited about that. We do anticipate that for K6 with benchmark advance. It's taking a little longer to implement that. So, but that is some of the context you might want to keep in mind when considering a goal for ELA and one for math. The next document is simply the SOFG template that has the proficiencies for all students and subgroups. Number three is a comparison of WESD, all students and subgroups to 11 comparable school districts. We acquired this list of the 11 comparable school districts from the Arizona Auditor General's spending reports. They put us in a group called Operational Eight. And so we acquired their data for your viewing pleasure. The next document is number four. It is the summary of the AZELA results. You will receive this within a few weeks, but here is a sneak peek of our AZELA results. On the front is the overview at the top and then on the bottom is a look at by-grade level and performance levels. There are a few years of proficient shown on that table. One note about that, if you recall from last board meeting, Paula McWherter had mentioned, which is also in this report from June, that once a student is proficient in English language, then they do not take this test any longer, nor do they receive EL services. So every year, we are working with less than proficient. So every year, we are working with less than proficient, English proficient students to bring them up to proficiency. So that's something to keep in mind when you're thinking about a goal. On the back of this is a look at the movement of our students within the performance levels. And if you look at these three tables on the far right, you will see for 24, 25, 40% of our EL students move to an, an upper performance level within the test, the AZELA, the English Language Learner Assessment. Okay? And the year prior, 38% moved up between performance levels. So this is also an option to be considered if you'd like for a goal. The next document is the district benchmarks. This was a report just given to you a few weeks ago, so I'm not going to spend any time mentioning that, but it does have all of our benchmark data and curriculum formative assessments in there. The, the following document, I'm on number six, is the SOFG for the district data. So that has all of the proficiencies for all students and subgroups. And then President Clayton talked about the next few documents that have to do with the survey feedback that you all facilitated. The last document, number 11, is a baseline goal projections that I calculated based on AASA through the years. This is only meant to give you some information. If, as you're working on a goal, if you want to consult with this to see how far you are from our actual baseline projections, that's fine. For example, we are starting to see some progress with I Ready, our aligned curriculum. And as well, I do want to mention, we are seeing some progress in seventh and eighth grade for ELA, for StudySync. And we ran correlations this year on Benchmark Advance. It is very highly correlated to AASA. So we have that anticipation that we will see benefits from that as well. You can always go back and check on these baseline projections to see if that's what you so like. And with that, I will let you go. I can answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jovanoun. One of the things that I just learned is that our district does have an assessment system that's readily available. So there's a word for that, Dr. Jovanoun. What do you call that when it's just?
I'm sorry, would you repeat, balanced assessment?
No, that we do have data readily available at any point in time. So I was happy to hear about that.
Yes, we, we have instant feedback on all of our data. Our curriculum has formative assessments built in, plus we have Star Benchmark. As soon as the students take it, they have instant feedback.
We have instant feedback, which is great. I didn't know that we had that tool and that system. So I was pretty happy about that. I also wanted to share that we invited an additional guest with us today, Mr. Rich Morris. And he's getting his doctorate and as part of his doctorate, there is an internship with a superintendent. So I'm like, might as well start now, Mr. Morris, come and join us. So yes, I wanted to share a couple of those things and then I'll send it back to Mr. Clayton or Dr. Ramos.
All right, we, with that, before we jump in, we'll take a 10-minute break? 15-minute break? Thank you.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We first just want to kind of begin this work with the mission and vision to kind of inform our decisions.
Thank you so much, President Clayne, members of the governing board. I have been thoroughly impressed with our teams as I have been going to many, many professional development sessions. All of our teams have been really focused on talking about the work that's going to get us to that vision statement that you have for us. And achieving excellence for every child, every day, every opportunity, it's been very impressive to see our teams, to see the way they're leading and to see how they're setting the strategy to get us there. And then, of course, the mission. I have had leaders tell me we need to make sure that ALL is capitalized and bolded, which I appreciated as well. That, yes, we're here for all students and ultimately for their success. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
And then, I think the next slide is our approved board guardrails. And then, moving into our drafted goals, we'll kind of start with English Language Arts. If we're talking about a document, let's just, on the upper-left corner is the document number and page so that we can all stay on the same page. So our English Language Arts goal is all centered around third grade. Either decreasing the minimally proficient, increasing the proficient, or following a cohort. So we'll kind of start on Document 11, which is our ASA ELL, our State Testing English Language Arts data. Obviously, one of the things we would need to update would be if we're starting in 2025, a five-year goal would be ending in the spring of 2030. So this is just a time to have, you know, looking at our data, a kind of a conversation about, and then based on our community feedback, any changes we want to see or in deciding on one of the three options if we would like to see that as well. Does anybody have any kind of input on? Oh, yeah. You can also refer to Document 8 to see kind of all the community feedback, or Document 7 for the online survey results. And so 49% of the people who took the survey wanted to see us focus on proficiency of third grade. The first bullet point on the screen.
Just, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So that first bullet point is decrease the percentage of third-grade students who are minimally proficient in English Language Arts, ELA, from 60% to 45%. And that's based on our standardized testing that we currently have. So, and we just had a conversation, Dr. Hightower, in regards to next year, there's going to be, they're going to, they're going to get rid of the test as we know it today, and there'll be a whole new test. So if all intents and purposes, everything we're working on right now, and you're looking at 2029, isn't going to even come into play. Thank you.
Yes, so we will have one more year of the AASA state standardized assessment, and then there's going to be a group that's going to start working on another state standardized assessment for the following school year. As I was talking to Dr. Jovan, and I'm like, Dr. Jovan, like, how can you share with us, like, how did we go from scoring a certain way with another assessment? And I'm like, I thought of that book, Who Moved My Cheese, right? Like, who moved my cheese? Why do, we went from having typically 75% of the students proficient on an AIMS assessment, and then 25% or 30% on an Arizona merit or an AASA. And she shared great data. She said with AIMS, there was a huge effort to involve educators in creating assessments that were aligned to the standards that they were teaching and also with guidelines for that inner rated reliability and those terms that statisticians use. But they created an assessment that really supported students. They showed us what they knew and then also teachers. But we also know that we're bound by this assessment, at least for one more year, right?
So with that being said, thank you. With that being said, the language that I see before me is invalid. Do the spring of 2029. Thank you.
Dr. Jovan, do you have experience with that?
I just would like to add that when the state has a new assessment, they put together a technical advisory committee made up of experts across the country, actually. And they go through and do the benchmark setting. So they try to set the performance levels very close to the previous assessment that we had so that there should be some smooth alignment from one assessment to the next. They do that every time they create a new state assessment. So something to keep in mind. However, it is going to be a new assessment, so to your point, yes. But they should smooth it out as much as possible so that we won't see as much of a bump.
So kind of piggybacking off of that, and with that kind of information that's being given, it does not make sense to word our goal in this fashion. So my question is, we're using currently for our ELA. Is that, that's not I-ready, I-ready is math, correct? Star. Okay, so my question is, if we were to utilize the STAR assessment that we currently have, because clearly that will obviously surpass whenever this other acronym that is happening is going away, is that an accurate way for us to measure the capabilities of our students? And also, what way can we make sure that that aligns to make sure it's also meeting the standard for whatever state testing they decide to have? That way, whatever our students are learning in the classroom is able to be translated pretty easily to whatever is happening outside of the classroom. Well, testing created outside of the classroom.
Such a good point. Ms. Gosa-Chapa and Dr. Jovan, if you want to address that question.
Sure. So I, first of all, when you're creating goals, you might want to use the phrase "state assessment" or "district benchmark" because we do have vendors. As a district, we may change vendors down the road. You never know within that timeframe. So it might be something you would want to consider. And then, if our goals are state goals, which I thought Dr. Ramos was his direction, then, you know, I would just use that phrasing to make sure that you account for that.
Thank you. All right. This is, forgive me, because I was not on the board when this was all voted on, so I'm just asking questions. But it looks like this is a five-year plan. And to be very honest with you, I appreciate and I respect what you're saying about what they normally do. I'm not going to bank on any of that. Me personally, again, one individual talking. So for all I know, they're going to come up with a whole new plan with a whole different matrix, with a whole different scoring. So I caution everybody about anything with a five-year plan, especially going out to 2029. You want to do one year, maybe that's something to consider for a pilot program. But right now, again, this is just myself talking, the language, I don't think I could support it the way it is. And not knowing what the future holds. So thank you.
So to piggyback, actually, you guys are bringing up some really great points. And I think we would trust the Dr. Hightower and the professionals who know that this curriculum is predictive, I guess, of what will happen on a state test as far as we know the state test to be now. We still know that the kids will learn, and if the numbers change, it doesn't mean that anybody in this room did something wrong. It could just be the way that they're, you know, wording it. So I do think it's a great point. Maybe we think about possibly one year or maybe two or something like that. But also then do district goals, right? So we, because we're trusting you all, that you are the professionals, and you know that those, the curriculum we've chosen and the benchmarks we're looking at and so forth will be predictive of how they're going to do on the test, regardless of what the name of the test is or whatever. And I think in light of the fact that things are changing and in light of the fact that there's going to be another election another year and then three years, and things may change again, because who knows who's in charge of what? And the powers from up above come down, we have no idea how it happens. Don't look at me like that, Mr. Kumbaya, Mr. Adams. Thank you.
Can I chime in real quick? Mr. Adams, you bring an excellent point, and you are right on point. I would definitely say, based on all the dialogue that's just happened, sounds like the safe bet would be to go with a one-year goal, not knowing what's going to happen. And you speak, you're speaking to my heart, because in Texas, when they did a STAR redesign, which is the state assessment, everybody's scores took a dip. And because this is going to, yeah, and because you're likely going to consider this maybe, right? In some form or fashion for your superintendent's evaluation because of performance, then you don't want to set them up to fail either. So I think this is the power, again, of when the board has a narrowed focus in the common language. Heck of a point. And to Ms. Gosa-Chapa's point, quick question. That STAR that you're referencing, is that an input, output, or an outcome?
Well, technically, it's an outcome, you know? Output, output, output.
Good, yes. And that's the reason why, because you want to set this, you want to set the goalpost. And then, there's another thing that could happen, like what we've experienced in Texas. The outputs may change as well. Because if the overall assessment is going to shift, then there are some outputs that maybe some vendors are selling that may no longer be as relevant and predictive. So excellent dialogue, and thank you for lifting that perspective.
And I am so glad that we found, I didn't know the state testing, the state test was changing. So that's great information, because I also kind of, I wanted it more to be based on STAR just because that's what our kids have every single day. You know, it's the curriculum on their desk today at Meet the Teacher, where the state test is like one month of their life here in this district. But then if you also look at Document 5 to 1, like, our ASA grades 3 through 8, like, we're going in the wrong direction. You know, when you're looking at the STAR data, we're making, you know, 5% gains in third-grade reading proficiency. So I think that also sets the district up for success because, and I think it's more reflective of what our students know and can learn because that's what they're using every single day, not just that one blip. And that could be a hard month for the students. The stressfulness of that one test where STAR, I think, we're seeing these results because they're just used to it. It's something that happens every day. When that assessment comes up, it's not stressful for them. Ms. Gosa-Chapa?
I do have a question. Back to Bill's point about maybe looking at having a one-year goal. As a district and as a governing board, if that is the route we do decide to do because of all of the outside circumstances, what does that mean as far as reaching that goal and the aggressiveness that's going to have to take place potentially to make sure those goals are met? And what would be the impact on our students to try to make that goal happen? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
I think so.
For goal, you have a longer time to make sure that you're getting there, to make sure that you're making the pivots that are necessary, right? And obviously, we don't want to set our people up to fail by having a goal that is so aggressive that it becomes more, I don't want to say a heavy lift, because obviously, our goal is always to make sure that our students are thriving so they can succeed. But what would that look like in a much shorter timeframe in pursuing that goal? Would that require more progress monitoring of? Would that require more progress monitoring of that particular goal to make sure that we are making the correct pivots when they need to happen? Does that make more sense?
Yes, for me, it does. And so I'll say, having a one-year, the first year in governance of doing this kind of a model, we rarely see major gains from, because you as a board are going to get calibrated with the leadership team as to what's actually working and what's not working. You can watch some of the board meetings nearby and I'll be happy to share them with you. You have superintendents who are telling the boards, thank you for asking that question, because we've never really taken a deep dive into those inputs. But the board has created the space for the superintendent to be brutally honest with them. And so you've got a big, you've got a bigger system than some of them. You as a board would lead the charge in a way. So your first year, you're still going to do the regular progress monitoring, but you're going to allow the systems and process to get settled in and get put in place. You know, should they and when they change the the state assessment, they're also going to have to talk about what are the outputs that are going to be predictive of those. So to President Clayton's point as well, that STAR is what those assessments, whatever the superintendent and the team recommend to you, you're going to get a chance to vote up or down. So if she says, we're going to bring you interim goals for third grade literacy, we may bring you this output for for kindergarteners and this output for first graders. You're going to be monitoring that during the school year. And as I, as I'd asked, you know, if you look at the analogy here, let's just make sure we're all on the same page. You look at third grade, that very first page of literacy, of ELA. Yeah, document number one, I apologize. If you're looking at 2024 to 2025, just using the analogy to keep it simple, did, would you say that you won the game or lost the game? Why would, why would you say you lost?
Excuse, hello, okay. I didn't know if I would say we lost, but we are definitely stagnant. And within that year, we haven't made any particular progress. Well, hold on. For minimally proficient, there hasn't been a lot of progress that has been moved. And the other areas, like in proficient, we actually went down. But we also went up by 1% in highly proficient. So no, I actually would say that we lost because we still have 53% of our students that are being failed.
But you see, you can have the common language and the conversation at the boardroom now. Because they're bringing you the data in a way that you're grasping. And then you can ask, so what's, what worked with with some of those students? What didn't work? And the staff is going to tell you those things and they're usually going to be inputs. You're going to be asking about the reliability of the output. How predictive is the output of the outcome that we want? If they're doing really great on the output assessment, but they're not coming out proficient, then we got a problem. We got a gap. And so how that works out with a one-year goal, you'll build your muscle around how to do governance. And the staff is also going to be learning how the board best receives information and processes. And vice versa, you as a board will lean in, have meetings with the superintendent one-on-one or in small groups, whatever that looks like, for you to make sure that you understand what it is that's taking place at the board meeting. So one year or five years, one year, you're still, you're still rocking and rolling. You don't have to do anything that's more excessive, because you still got to, you got to first just learn how to do progress monitoring. You're welcome.
I know, I know, that things that our principals had shared, they were very excited about this session. And just wanting to know, what are the, what are the goals that are going to be set? In leading, Dr. Bailey did share last year that it was a 3% increase across the board for English Language Arts and also for mathematics. And of course, we all want the students to be at a 100%, but it was in the, in the discussion with them. It was what, what could be specific, measurable, attainable, results bound and, and results oriented and time bound. And they felt that, yes, maybe it is a difficult goal to attain, but, but we can do it. And in math, in some cases, the team did meet it. Dr. Jovanon, I'm like, as a statistician, Dr. Jovanon, like, tell us from your perspective. And her recommendation was lower, right, Dr. Jovanon? So I don't know if you want to speak to that, but.
Well, my, I felt 3% was fair.
Okay.
Fair, because we were doing it across the board. And so math and ELA are very different, not comparable. And if we're just going to pick one goal and go across the board, I thought 3% was fair. We also have a very large district, so it's hard to move the needle on a very large population from one year to the next.
So yes, so 3% every year, so it would be 15% across the five years. In in some areas, in mathematics, we did well and we actually surpassed the growth as a district in comparison to the state in four grades. Mr. Morris is, so, and then, so that was a huge celebration and a huge success for our teams to know that they surpassed the state. But in English Language Arts, we did not and neither did the state either. They was pretty, pretty flat or even going backwards. Ms. Peterson, do you have a mic over there?
Can you refer, if you're looking at a document, can you just refer what document and what page you're looking at, please?
Dr. Jovanon, can you, I know you said 3% was the number that you were recommending. And then I'm not sure who said 3%, so 15% total over five years. But could you, my understanding of that would be 3%, but at some point, you get to a diminishing returns point. I don't know if that's the right term, but like, you can't always improve 3%, right? Especially in a state test where, where the average is not, you know, isn't 15% plus whatever our percent is. So I, I really struggle with saying, oh, yeah, 3% is good, times five is 15, so let's do that, when we know that like, we can't expect them to grow at that same rate eternally. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so we're, we always have to keep in mind, we want all of our students to be proficient, for sure. So it goes without saying. However, the, to achieve a 3% goal, and that was across the board for every subgroup in addition to ELA and math. So to achieve 3% every year is very ambitious. That's why when it was brought to me, I, I felt that it was fair if you're going to do it across the board like that. So that's what happened last year.
Just to restate and clarify what you're saying, 3% is a reasonable goal when we're saying, as a whole, we'll improve 3%. But if we're looking at a specific subgroup of students to say 3%, that's not reasonable, which is what our goals are doing. They're looking at specific subgroups and they're saying, we're going to move this group, which from the beginning has been an issue that I've had with these goals and with this entire process, is that you took five people who have no business-making goals, without a Dr. Jovanon in the room, to have these conversations and to just pick a number that we thought sounded right. And so I, I think her expertise is incredibly invaluable and I do not, I mean, you can keep working if you want to, but I'm a no on all of these, because she had no input in this. And the community also doesn't have that input and doesn't have that understanding. We, we messed up.
If I may just add, I did create number 11, document number 11 for you. If that helps you feel more informed about setting some goals and comfortable. If you pay, turn to page two, that's the projections and it's actual data, based on our actual data across the years. So what was the difference from one year to the next? What's the average? And then going out five years from there, which takes us to 2030, which may not be the year. Last year was 2029, right? So you, hopefully, that will help you feel a little more informed and comfortable with whatever goals you want to set.
Thank you for, thank you. I'm the real late person in this room in regards to, been doing it a while. But first of all, I want to, I also want to thank all of our, our staff, our teachers and our principals administration. There is a lot to celebrate, so I want to acknowledge that. But as I look at, I'm looking on page one, the very first page. What, if anybody ever looks up or goes to the state, document one, page one, I'm just, it's the only one I've gotten, that I'm pulling up. And as you look at it, you see 2024 and 2025, the passing grades were 25% and 26%. So the communities, sorry. Forgive me. Document one, page six. Thank you, sir. And I apologize. But as you can see, 25% passing, increased by a percentage 26. The community looks at this, again, and takes looks or goes online and takes a look at our grades, our, our scores. And because it's a competitive world out there, we have charter schools, private schools, everybody's coming after us, they'll look at those and say, hey, you're only at 26%, 25% in math. Forget about your subgroups and everything else like that. You know, you're still, that's a success. That's a success to this room, that just 25%, 26% of our children are passing these tests. And, and for those that are listening, they know how much I love them. I'm just giving a perspective from the community, the things that I hear when people come up to me going, hey, man, Washington, you know, look at your grades, look where you are. You can go, you can even take a look at these scores, where our sister districts are at. They're well below also. So the problem is not just for Washington, but still, the bottom, bottom line here is, while you get into subgroups and everything else like that, these numbers are dismal. And, and the community is asking the questions, we're paying all this money, we're paying these taxpayer dollars, why aren't we seeing scores go up much further than this? And I'm just making a blanket statement. And like I said, those that are listening, you know I love you. I'm just giving a perspective. That's all. Thank you.
I will actually say that I agree with Lindsay and the fact that, and I think we actually had this discussion after the very first community listening session, when we realized the fact that we're asking people questions about what they wanted their goals to be and they didn't have the full picture. That is unreasonable and that is also unfair. And it is a learning process, right? We're learning how to do this. This is our first time as a board doing that, for those of us that actually participated. And so I think it would be fair for us to scrap the goals that we did start off with and come, start completely fresh and start completely new, especially now that we have Dr. Jovanon in the room with us. We are going through a transition and it's time for us to have a real conversation that, yes, we are moving the needle and also because two things can be true at once, that it's not enough and too many of our students are falling through the cracks. And I will say, as the person who was, who did do the student listening sessions, our students do absolutely recognize it. And so one of the points that was actually brought up, and I believe, Jenny, you were at the Equitable Outcomes Committee meeting, were you as well, Kyle? Where one of the students actually did point out, you're asking me a question and I don't have the full picture, so I'm not going to answer it. And I think that's very fair. And I think that is something that as a board, we should absolutely take a look back, look at and go back to the drawing board, because as I stated to you, Lindsay, in the meeting where you brought this up, the goals aren't it. It's, it's, they can't be it, because we didn't give people the full picture. So even with us having the data of what people said that they felt that they preferred, it's still not an accurate representation, because they didn't have all of the information and they were not completely and fully informed on what they were choosing.
Thank you. I, I think you guys bring up some really great points. And I think in light of the fact that we have an interim superintendent, I, I would agree. I think we, I don't think, you know, we didn't have all of this where we could look at the historical information and then, you know, try to be more realistic. And in light of the fact that they're, you know, this assessment may be different and maybe the wording needs to be different, that we're using district tests and so forth. It's just a little bit of bumpiness and turbulence right now. So, I mean, I would, I would agree with that. I think something that's really important, though, in, in light of this, is that, you know, maybe tonight, since we have some time, we can look at some specific areas that maybe would be helpful. But also, I think, you know, it, we didn't get to present to the teachers and the principals. And I think without their input and what they see in the classroom and so forth, I think that is really important. They're part of the community. And so we didn't really have their input in this whole situation, other than a few minutes to try to explain quickly what it was all about. But I don't know if then we can go, like, if we could do guardrails. I do think guardrails would be helpful, because a lot of those are things that are more inputs, right? And so we know that for kids to be successful, we need to have highly qualified teachers and so forth. So we know that there's a bunch of that information that's out there. And we did hear a lot of that information from the listening circles that we were able to do. So those are my thoughts as well.
Thank you. My objective tonight, I wasn't part of this. So I'm here more as an observer and to, to learn. But my objective tonight is to give Dr. High Power, High Power? You are now High Power. My God. Lapita, forgive me, I saw, I will call you your highness now. And forgive me, that was, I apologize. But the objective that I've, that I personally have is to, to give her some, some sort of direction for the next year. And, and so if we can, you know, right now, there's a lot of conversation about what, what we should do, what are we going to do? But if we can land, like, what do we have, an hour left? If we can, if we can drill down to like, giving Lapita, her highness, the, some direction, I think we'd have a successful meeting tonight. So I don't know how we get there, by the way, but thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And perhaps the governing board wants to engage in setting that one-year goal for the state standardized assessment. And then there's huge hopes that the new state standardized assessment is going to be aligned and more reflective to what teachers are doing in the classroom. Because although you do see that 25 and 26% and that's what people talk and that's what the false narrative is out there, it is not reflective of what's actually happening in the classroom. And that's extremely frustrating for all of us educators. However, we do get measured by that. And we do get letter grades with that. And we do even get scarlet letters if the growth was not where it needed to be. But yes, I think, I mean, if the governing board and with the support of Dr. Jovanon sharing with us what that goal, and Dr. Bailey, because you had already been working with the principals. I mean, the train was moving in all the planning for principals return and teachers return as well.
Yeah. If I may, this is, this is a great dialogue to watch you all as a team unpack this together. And I'd say, Mr. Adams, you're, you're right on point. So I, I hope you're not just an observer, because you're modeling that, this, this is what we call the genesis, the genesis mindset of that I'm gonna, I'm not going to allow the can to get kicked down the road anymore. I'm gonna, I'm going to do something. And so I would agree with you, that my hope for you is that you somehow, some way, come up with a, at least an annual target, so that you can really open up the, the whole pathway to begin to monitor your way there. Like I told you, in the first year, most districts struggled to, to make any significant gains. It's, you still want to just learn how to do progress monitoring. And without setting an end target, be it what that is, you're not going to be able to do that. And you're, you're not giving the superintendent clear direction of where you want her to go. The other part that I'm hearing about the community, you're experiencing what most boards experience, that how many times I hear on a dice that, oh, the community said, the community said, well, you know, we're wondering, who, who are you listening to? Who are you having access, who has access to you? Who is the community? And usually, by doing this kind of work, you really hit the nail on the head, Mr. Adams, that the, the boards that are doing this work are educating their community. And their communities are starting to ask better questions over time. There are districts that have been doing this work so well, they don't have opponents at reelection, because the community is clear and they've been educated repeatedly and constantly. They have like four, they have quarterly two-way communication town halls. They're talking to pastors, they're talking to students, they're talking to teachers. So this is just to get you off the ground, to learn how to engage your community, because they probably don't pay that much attention. And you're so right, because they are going to look at that and say, you mean to tell me that about 75% of our kids are not at reading level? That's exactly how they're going to interpret that. And that's why when you're at the board meeting and you're asking these questions and you're understanding, and I love what Dr. Hightower just said, you've got to be able to explain the whole story, the whole picture. But if you're not focused on that at the board meeting and you're not getting those answers from the staff and the leadership team, then what will you say to them, right? So there's a whole piece in here that's integrity focused, that what you say in these goals is what you're going to honor your word towards monitoring and trying to make sure that you do get there. You've seen that not monitoring hasn't necessarily worked. So let's at least get, whatever that looks like for you, you're the owners. So let's at least get, whatever that looks like for you, you're the owners of the system as the board members. And I'll go ahead and give you the, I'll spoil the surprise for you. We anticipated that this might be part of the conversation. So I asked the leadership team to prepare end targets, based on what they think is realistic. Because you're right, I mean, your five board members, you're not the educational experts. Guess what? This is how you partner with your educational experts. This is how you build trust with them, but you also, and by monitoring, you hold them accountable. So maybe we could get there.
I have a quick question, and forgive my lack of knowledge for not knowing what you mean by the term "end target," but can you explain that, please?
End target is the, the outcome goal, the final number. So if we're at 24%, what does the team think is realistic in getting to this academic year? Mind you, the school year's about to start. And what Dr. Hy Tower said to you is very important. Principals and leaders are waiting for the board to lead the way. And when you do that, you're going to create the space for them to just excel, and tell you all the amazing things that they're doing, but they need you to set some type of a goal.
I had another question in addition to that, that just pivoted, but back to what you just said, Dr. Hy Tower, in regards to the fact that when we look at this data, it's not necessarily translating what exactly our students can actually do, because as much to Kyle's point, they are used to taking, I'm really bad with acronyms, but STAR and the alphabet mafia, they are used to those things, right? So they are more accustomed to being able to actually, for lack of a better word, perform for those tests, right? So how do we get it to where, if we are going to use a state assessment as the measurement tool that we're going to use, that that translates over? How do we tell that story of what our students are actually, actually know and are able to do? Does that make sense? Or does someone need clarity?
I wanted to address the situation where principals and teachers are looking for goals, because they are. In July of last year, August of last year, we actually came up with the 3% goal, and it was the leadership group that actually came up with that 3% goal. And you can see, and Elon, we did not make it, it was, we were, we were the same as previously. In math, there was a 2% increase, so. But the principals and the teachers are goal-oriented, okay? And they really are looking at some direction from the board, from, from our leadership group, on some type of goal, okay? We did not share 3% every single year. We did not share that, to tell you the truth, because we were also waiting for where we were going as a board, okay? These types of guardrails and goals were not actually approved by the board until December of last year. So that's, that's where we're at. I will also tell you that as an, as a district, we moved from a paradigm shift, which is a shift from really looking at growth of our students, to proficiency, okay? And we know that for, for, in order to have proficiency, we have to have growth. But we really focused last year on proficiency, and those are the numbers that you're looking at when you see partially proficient and proficient. Those are, those are the, those are the students that we feel as though meet the, the goal of proficiency. So, I just wanted to give that impact, that the, that leadership principals, directors are really looking at where the board wants to proceed as, as far as their goals.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I want to challenge the whole premise that we're here tonight with, that, that this board needed to start progress monitoring. Mr. Adams, how many years have you served on the Washington Elementary School District School Board?
Seventeen.
And in seventeen and a half years, is this the first time you've started looking at data that's coming, state test data? Or in your seventeen years, is that something that regularly came before the board?
Regularly came before.
Okay. So, we were not in a situation where we were ignoring data or pretending like it didn't happen. Dr. Bailey, you created, you said that you had the 3% goal, and that's what you're working for. Was that the first time that you guys had ever come up with a goal for improving students' success on... No. So you were creating goals and regularly meeting them. And so, what's happening now is your principals and your schools and your team is begging for goals for the board to create, and we're laypeople, again, who probably shouldn't be creating these goals, and we've stood in the way for you to say, we need to focus on proficiency, or we need to focus on growth, and we need to look at these numbers. And so now, we've spent seven months dragging our feet with these goals that we're going to throw in the trash, so that they can do what they were going to do anyway, and tell us the goals that they think are best as experts in their field, and talk to us about why those matter. So, I just want to dismiss the premise that we weren't doing this to begin with. We were, and I applaud the work that you've done, and the progress that you've made. I also really appreciate the mention of the difference between proficiency and growth, because as Dr. Hy Tower stated, this test is not a good assessment. It does not measure what our kids can do. It has problems. I sat on the committees that wrote AIMS, and I sat on the committees that started to write AZ Merit and then disappeared. They didn't take educators. So what they do is they take the state standards, and educators understand how those standards translate to our kids. The state standards are highly, you know, written at a high level, lots of words in them, sometimes a little unclear. And so, when you have educators on there who are with our students and know the level of proximal development of those kids, and know what they can do, they can write an assessment that will help us. This assessment, it, it doesn't matter how you twist it, we're never going to get 80% of our kids to be successful. It's not, it's not accessible, regardless of all the factors that exist. So, we, we, we are a growth district, and that's where we have to be for now, especially in an assessment that is so inaccessible for proficiency. And so, I, I, I just want to recognize the work that has been done in the past, that has led us to where we are, that has helped us to become as successful as we are. And I agree, Mr. Adams, nobody likes to look at that numbers, but when you contextualize that number, and when you say, look at every other district that's like us, we are all struggling with this mediocre assessment. And when you, when you look at where our kids are and the growth that we've made, when you add that context, it's a whole different ballgame. And that's, that's our job as board members, that's our job as community members, to help people understand what they're looking at and to contextualize this data. So, I will be quiet for a few minutes.
It is a flawed assessment, so we're hoping to get a better one this, this next, next I did an exercise with my previous cabinet and gave them the practice AASA assessment for eighth graders. Just, right? Just as, as an exercise to say, again, we're not making excuses, because we are bound by it, and we, we are working so hard, and the educators are working so hard, but the growth has led the schools to be rated A and B, and having lots of schools that are rated A and B in the Washington Elementary School District, it was because of the growth, it wasn't because of the, of the proficiency of, of the assessment.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind everybody, we have an hour left, so we can figure out what to, what to do with our superintendent. Are we going 7:30? What, what time is it scheduled? It is 7:30. We're going to 8 o'clock, right?
Dr. Jovanov, I know you had worked on, like, some projections, I don't know if you want to share those?
So projections are in Document 11, so while you're bringing that up, I just want to put out a little bit more information. As a reminder, I know there's been some comments about AASA, and that's all fair. It is aligned to the Arizona standards. And as a reminder, the curriculum that we adopted over the last three years is aligned to AASA, highly correlated. And what does that mean? That means if we go up in scores on Benchmark Advanced, we should expect we're going to go up in scores on AASA, ELA. Same with I Ready, and we're starting to see that. So just as a reminder. Document 11 starts with that trend, looks across the years, and on the page two, you can see that it's, you don't even have to worry about the plot if you don't want to, just the yellow box inside the graph just gives you the, the actual data of what we've seen across the years. So did we grow from one year to the next, the average across those five years? And then, just a projecting out five years from there. So this is a baseline goal projection just given to you, to give you some context, some guidance, however you want to use it. Then page four, oh, sorry, thank you, Shannon. On page three is the projections by subgroup for ELA, and then the remaining pages are the same for math, same setup.
So then, Dr. Hy Tower, have you prepared what, do you think we can, well, Dr. Ramos, didn't you say that you had, they had prepared projections to where they think we could be? That's this document? Oh, okay.
Can I say something really quick? So we brought up the fact that, you know, for the last however many years and whatever, that there's already been progress monitoring, and so while I love the fact that we love giving our opinions on that, I also want to state the fact that while we look at our data, even with all that progress monitoring, without the focus of the board, we still are kind of all over the place. And that is not a judgment on our educators, that is not a judgment on our staff, that is not a judgment on anybody who sits here at the district office. But even with the lack of, even with all of the data that we received, because we do receive a lot of data, that last presentation was 30 pages and gave us a plethora of information, right? And also, the lack of focus in targeting certain goals has also hurt us as a district, okay? Not only that, our students absolutely recognize that they are not getting what they deserved, and that they absolutely should be getting more. That is not a judgment on the people that are doing those jobs, that is a reality of what we're facing. Even with all that progress monitoring, regardless of whether or not this test is whatever it is, because, I mean, testing is what it is, we don't have to go by the state test to make our goals, right? If we read our literature, it absolutely says that. Even with all of the data that we've received, the lack of focus from the board is still detrimental to our students. So I will say this once again, and I don't care who it makes cringe, student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors do. So when, as a board, we come together and we actually focus on the goals that need to be accomplished, that doesn't mean that everything else is going to fall out of the way. Because as a school district and as a school system, if we're actually doing our job, that is going to be implied anyway. However, we are in times where we need to actually align our resources, we are in times where we are not about to get more money, and I think that's very, very, like, real with everything that is happening in the world, and so we do have to align ourselves. We have to align the time that we're spending, we have to align the resources that we have, and we have to have those tough conversations. So I will say once again, as a board, until adults' behavior changes, student outcomes don't change, and we've clearly been getting the data, and it still has just barely started to move the needle. So, as a board, I will say, and I'm just speaking for myself, because I know we're a member, a five-member board, I do actually think we need to do this work. I do actually think that we do need to come up with goals. We do not have to go specifically by the state test, we can absolutely come with our own way that we're doing. That is more measurable of what our students are able and know to do, okay? So that's what I'm going to say on that, because we do need to focus, because right now, we're not focused. And if you don't believe that, take a look at our last board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gosa Chapa. Ms. Mora, did you want to comment?
Yeah, and I appreciate all the conversation, and I'm in my 37th year of education, and I think, having come from Illinois, but also out here, there's always been a question about the validity of a state assessment. And I'm sure you hear that in every state you go to, how valid is the assessment? And I know, in my years of teaching, especially here in Arizona, a focus on those state standards and whether or not my students were demonstrating the skills that were tied to those standards was what drove the teaching. And we can always have questions about which assessment. We've gone through AIMS, and we had questions about that. I was on a committee as well, wrote AZ Merit questions, I thought that was awesome. It was better. And then, we shifted over to AASA. So there's always that question of how valid the state assessment is. What I did see this past year, when we, as a district, came up with some very specific goals, it unified us in our approach to whether or not we were holding ourselves accountable, and not making anyone feel accountable. But were we truly looking at the individual, individual needs of our students, and we were watching them grow? And that was what was, was a strength. Now, I think we were ambitious, 3%, 5% we were, you know, looking at, but what we did land on was a very focused approach of what we were looking for. And yes, proficiency was where we were headed. And Mr. Adams, I've heard you say it for years, you know, this is what the public sees. And whether we like it or not, it's our measure, it's where we have to, we have to go towards. We have seen correlations between our STAR assessments and our Benchmark Advanced, and but this year, because we had some very focused goals, for the first time, we were strategically looking at that, and were we moving the needle? And so that's the direction that, you know, we really need to head. My understanding, when we did the SOFG, though, was we were supposed to find those gaps. So we have a goal that every student is trying to approach and achieve, but then we needed to look, which students were falling behind? Which students weren't quite up there? So that as a district, we could get very targeted and focused on, you know, why were our third-grade students just not as, as, moving as quickly? So what can we do as a system to make sure that every third-grade teacher has a path and a focus in which way to go? And so, so I think, you know, we do have to, and as Dr. Hy Tower said, we're not making excuses, we know there's a state assessment out there, it's not perfect, but we do have a commitment to our kids to make sure that we are progressing and growing, and that's to Ms. Gosa Chapa's point, is regardless of what the measure is, we have to stay focused on what the target is, which is to get our students those skills that they need when they leave school. And so I think that's where setting a goal district-wide that we are all unified and focused on really does help us. And so, that's just my perspective on that.
Thank you. And thank you for the many years of service, by the way. You got me beat. A couple things. So what I hear you saying is that as a team, regardless of not having any more direction, you still created goals, and you still hit, you still hit your marks for all intents and purposes. I can assure this board that, the boards that I participated in, we've always had a strategic plan, we've always had superintendent assessment, evaluations, thank you, I'm tired, forgive me. So we always had those covered. And those board members are as passionate as what you see here. So they, they believe that what they were doing, that they were doing the right things. And I commend all those that have served before us, their heart was in the right place, trying to do the best for this district, and the district did quite well over those years. Times have changed, the environment has changed, there's so many adversaries, so many factions that are attacking our system politically. We don't need to get into that conversation. But what we do with what we have, our family is doing very, very well. And can we do better? Absolutely. Can we find some of those, do it, do our strategic plan and, and put something together for the community, for their, for our staff to understand a little bit better? That's why we had this wonderful woman here, because she's going to bring some, some magical things, along with what you already have. She's going to complement and give us leadership and direction. So, I'm proud of this board, I'm proud of what, you know, there's five of us, five different personalities. But that's the beauty of this, you know, and, and I'm sure we're going to, we're going to land where we need to be, and continue to have our staffs back. So, thank you for allowing me to add that little piece. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, Mr. Clayton?
So then, would we be looking at Document 11 and using those to, those would be the goals that you recommend? those would be the goals that you recommend? Oh, sorry. Document 11, page two.
So I asked for support from Dr. Giovanna, an statistician, to recommend the goals. I personally always want them higher. But again, that's why I asked for her expertise. So Dr. Giovanna, I don't know if you want to comment on those.
So these are baseline. So it's, it was my understanding it was going to be the board, and I wanted you to feel comfortable with whatever goal you decided on. And if it was a little higher than the projections, you would have enough information to make an informed decision and to be able to justify that goal. If, you know, there is a lot of context to take into consideration when setting a goal. You know, we talked about the correlations of our new curriculum that's being implemented and our expectation. So it's completely up to you how you address this document. This is actual data of how we did over the last five years. We did not have our new curriculum during that time period. We do now, so.
May I ask a question? So this document, this is our, first of all, I'm looking at it, and it's going in the wrong direction. That's the very first thing I see. I'm a simple guy. So the other thing that I see is that, is this the last five years? Is that what I'm looking at?
It's the change from one year to the next over the last five years, yes. So every dot is the change, is the difference between the previous.
Okay, so it's the last five years?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's actual data.
Yes.
And then you're projecting on here too, is that correct?
Right.
And you're projecting a 35% increase by the year 2035? For grade three, sorry? What's, okay, but it says 35% by 2030.
Would you like me to explain? Okay, so if we, we turn to page two on Document 11, at the upper top is grade three, actually. We've mentioned grade three ELA a bit through this meeting. The average difference across the last five years was 2%. It's a plus 2%, but it's been 2%. So if you project a five-year growth, so five times two is 10%.
You're looking at a trend, I got it, I got it, I got it. You're looking at a trend.
Okay.
I do projections all the time.
Fantastic.
That's what we do in business. We're taking, we're taking a look at, you know? And the thing about projections are, they're projections.
Right, that's right.
The numbers don't lie, but they're projections. And depending on what the legislature does with us next year, can blow out the whole thing. But thank you, you just, now I have a clear understanding of what you were doing. Thank you.
Those, those like things, like one, two, three, and four, represents 22, 23, 24, and 25, is that correct? On page two, Document 11, is that what that means?
I'm sorry, did you ask about the one, two, three, four?
Yeah, so are those the years that those correlate with?
Starting in 21, did you start with 21?
No, I started with 22. Because it says overall average difference since 22, so it starts with 21?
Yeah, 22.
It does start with 22. So one correlates with 22, two correlates with 23, three correlates with 24, and four correlates with 25, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're a team player. Dr. Hyatt-Tower, or High Power? It's very helpful. So is it helpful for the board to have a goal for you to try to reach? Some goals, something, right?
Yes.
Okay, we've done evaluations in the past. In the last four and a half years I've been on, thanks to Ms. Peterson and I, we didn't choose the best evaluation tool for two of those years. But sometimes I just felt like we just didn't have a good evaluation. Like, I don't know what we were, I mean, I'm just going to be completely honest. I didn't know what we were evaluating. And so if it's helpful for you to have a couple of goals, clearly, everybody already has their goals. They had meet-the-teacher night tonight, and they know what they're doing based on the curriculum that's available, based on the testing that they're going to have to do. And I was a social studies teacher, and so I didn't have to do any of that testing. But I still had testing, because I needed to make sure that they were learning what was, back in the old days, textbooks. And so, but as the, in terms, as the superintendent right now, is it helpful if we give you some goals?
Yes, of course.
Okay. And the more specific we can be about it is helpful. And then we can help monitor throughout the year. And the only reason I'm asking this is that I don't think we, as a board, we've ever really done that, you know? And so then we have an evaluation, and it's like, well, I, you know, it's kind of like that, and then you get all this information. So if nothing else, it's just helpful to have some information to give you, to then give your team. And as Ms. Moore mentioned, from the stuff from last year, having a goal, a specific 3%, at least gave you something to shoot for. And what I've come to realize just recently is that we do have more power as a board to help dictate the inputs, to help you all be successful in reaching the goals that you have. And that's something I really never knew this whole time. I'm just being completely honest. Your other board members were really great. They just knew what they were doing. I didn't have, I still am learning. So anyway, I just wanted to know if this is helpful, to at least have something. It could be STAR data, it could be anything. It could be one year, it could be 10 years. It could be anything we want. But if it's helpful for you to then share with your team so that then in your meetings, you help hold people accountable, and not in a bad way, but a positive way, and then celebrate the growth that we have and so forth, I think that's.
Yes, that would be helpful, definitely. And I was going to ask Mr. Morris too, because he's an administrator coach, so he has, how many principals do you work closely with? Mr. Morris? And the dialogues you've been having with them as well?
Each of us admin coaches have around 11 schools. And sorry, what was the second question?
The second question was, has you been working with them and getting ready to kick off pre-service week before the students arrive? What guidance the principals have been asking as well, so?
Yes, thank you for the question. Each of our schools have our IAPs, which is the document we use for continuous improvement. It's where they create their action plans for the schools. I think goals are extremely, the 3% proficiency, all the schools latched on to that last year. It was a focus. And so we actually, the schools went back and rewrote their action plans based on that, because they wanted to be aligned with what the district was saying. And so they, they very much appreciate that alignment. And so whatever the goal is, I think where we, I see a lot of the data on this page, because it's by every grade, I think the important piece, if we are looking at that page two still, at the very top is the overall district movement. And so having a district goal, not necessarily by grade level, I think is important, because we get too many goals. It causes some confusion, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gosa-Chapa.
I kind of want to shift this conversation, because I think we've heard a lot about accountability for our staff or our superintendent and whatnot. But what about accountability for the board? What are we going to hold ourselves accountable to? If we don't have goals where we're actually communicating what we should be doing, how are we going to actually hold ourselves accountable? Because without those goals, as Jimmy pointed out, when we looked at our superintendent evaluations that we've done, it was all over the place, and nobody knew what they were evaluating, right? Which caused a lot of confusion. So at what point as a board are we going to hold ourselves accountable to the things that we want to see happen for our district, for our students, for our staff, for our superintendent and whatnot? How are we going to hold ourselves accountable? And so what are we going to hold ourselves accountable?
We've got to do better with these microphones. Unbelievable. So sitting here and appreciating the dialogues going around, I think the number one priority that this board has right now is to come up with goals for our interim superintendent, so that she can give direction to the employees and to the staff and to our teachers. As far as a board's concerned and what our responsibilities are, table it. And if you want to do another study session, which I will not, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, it'll be in August sometime. But if you want to, you know, right now, our number one priority for the next 40 minutes is to come up with what, the direction for our interim superintendent. So that's, again, my personal view. Pick three things, and forgive me, because I don't, I don't have the old evaluations, which by the way, whichever edition you're looking at, we were supposed to have given evaluation, going back to us being laypeople, doing evaluation for a superintendent, we don't shadow you. And so I can try to remember back with some of those, you know, what you were scoring your superintendent on is like, does the individual do this, this, and this? I don't know, I'm not with the individual all day. How would I know that you're doing this? So maybe keeping this simplified, so it gives direction to the district. Maybe the charge for this evening, just to give you direction. And as far as what the board's responsibilities are, we can have another discussion. Maybe do it on paper, you know? Now, I'm getting into the weeds, but we ought to just table that right now, I think, and just take care of our superintendent. Thank you.
So I guess, I mean, what we're hearing from the district is a 3% goal for this year is what is already in their plans?
That's not true. They do not have a goal for this upcoming school year. It was last year's goal of the 3%. A lot of them, because we have to, it's a weird thing that the State Department does, is we have to create our action plans in February and March for the next school year without even seeing the data of how we performed. And so it's just a weird cycle. So a lot of schools, you'd probably see if you looked at their action plans, have a common 3%, because that's what we did last year. But it was only based on the fact of what last year's goal was.
And so on Document 11 at the top, an overall aver, or, so recommended five-year, so 1%, a 1% increase in ELA overall is what the district is recommending, 2%?
From my understanding from, from Dr. Giovanna's, she was setting a baseline for the governing board to be able to make an educated guess on what a projection could be. What that 1% is saying is that since 2022 overall in WSD, we have an increase of the 1% in our proficiency. She is saying that in five years, we would have an increase of 5%. And so in terms of currently, right now, in '25, we are at 30% proficiency. And in five years, the projection would be 35% as a goal. And then it breaks down by grade level as well, yes?
I, I mean, I would, I will feel comfortable with a, with a 3% if that's something to shoot for, especially knowing that we have that curriculum, I don't know, right? The, the curriculum that's aligned, we've had it for three years, so we should start seeing the gains from that, but.
Is this the one that the assessment is changing at the end of the year? Or is that math?
Yeah, so that would be for the one year only.
Okay, so this would just be a one-year goal? Okay.
Sorry, if you notice, the ELA and the math are different. So I believe last year it was 3% overall across the board. So it might be wise to consider an ELA goal and a math goal differently. And I just have to say, I understand that we want goals, but for heaven's sake, these goals don't affect your teachers. They're not going to be like, oh, the board set a 3% goal. You know what? I'm going to actually teach really hard for this year. Last year, phoned it in. This year, you know what? 3% is inspiring me, right? So honestly, I don't care about the number. You can make 15%, your teachers are going to teach their little butts off no matter what. Or not, and then they need to be counseled and taught and, you know? But, but it doesn't matter, so. But I do think maybe looking at ELA and math differently might be important.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Could you say that one more time? Mufasa, mufasa, mufasa. Okay, so, so I think that's a great idea, Ms. Peterson. Maybe just two, two goals, ELA and math. And then at least it gives you something, Dr. Hyatt-Tower, and your team to shoot for. And then also, we can utilize the board guardrails that we have. And then use the new guard, the, what are they called? Superintendent guardrails, right? So the superintendent guardrail, so that we, as a board, have a better opportunity of getting the data that is more digestible and we can give more direction as to what it is we need presented. And then we can use the guardrails to help achieve those goals. But you guys are already, they're already, people are already doing great things. It's just that, again, like I said, the thing that I learned a lot about, sorry, Danny, is that the inputs and the budget can be readjusted to help reach some of those goals if we see some deficits. That's what we're supposed to do. If we see some deficits and you say, this is what we need, Dr. Hyatt-Tower says, we, we need this and this, then we can, we can modify and adjust. So leaving this evening, it would be really helpful, I think, for Dr. High Power to have that information. And the rest of your team, is that correct? I see head nodding, even Paula is nodding. Okay, thank you, Ms. McQuarrie.
Sir? Jenny, you brought up using the guardrails from SOFG. We haven't discussed it with you, and I don't know if you had a chance to review it. I would definitely get rid of anything that says shall not. You know, I'll tell you that right now. I'm looking at page, I don't even know what this is. This one. And it's on page three. This one. You know, it's, it's common sense things, you know? Distributed resources, importance of cultural responses, responsiveness including diversity, professional development, that's a given. Holistic needs of students, including their social, emotional, I don't know how deep you can get with that one. But their wellbeing, their physical wellbeing, that's safety, right? Excuse me, excuse me, everybody. Rather than us, rather than us trying to come up with some direction for the superintendent, why don't we allow her to make some recommendations, which I think would be very fair?
So the, the superintendent guardrails has, have, I think they had already, they had already been approved? Oh, the board, okay. So then there were some recommendations for superintendent guardrails. And in my experience, the way to really focus, prioritize, and progress monitor is to have three, maybe four, goals. Not that you're not focusing on any of these, but as far as goals that you progress monitoring, three to four in order to stay focused. So I don't know if the board has a couple of guardrails for the superintendent that are critical. To all of you, I'd be happy to, to have them. I'll look at them to be able to make a recommendation. So I'll review them right now.
No, but I think before we move to the guardrails, we should wrap up, like, an overall ELA goal of two, is, would ELA be a 1% increase and math be a 2% increase across the board? 2% increase for ELA and a 3% increase for math?
So if I, if I can give you a little heads up, when you get into progress monitoring, if you, if you choose to not narrow down to a specific grade, your progress monitoring could still come out looking like a data dump, because you're going to have all the grades. Now, if this is the route you want to go, because this is a framework, and you can, you can proceed how you want, then maybe you're going to be allowed to have one to three interim goals per goal. So maybe you look at the grades that are struggling the most, and you bring reports to the board on those grades. And maybe you give them the other data. But the focus of the board meeting will be, your progress monitoring report will be no more than five pages. I'll share plenty of examples from other districts. And trust, because, because it's very doable, and I could tell you, like, you have, I don't want to say their name, but there's one neighboring district who, year one, they saw no gains. This was the end of their year two, they're celebrating. They made gains in ELA. They made gains in ELA, they made gains in mathematics. And their guardrails, I can go ahead and address that one later on, but for the focus of goals, if you go with a district-wide one, that's what I would recommend. If you end up seeing, saying, hey, you know, I'm looking at, seventh grade looks like they're moving, eighth grades look like they're moving. Mr. Adams, you're exactly right. You got to tell that story to the community. Like, you know, that's what a data savvy board looks like and sounds like. You are the direct connection to the community. So it's, one of your biggest roles is, you got to be able to tell the story. So I just, I just say that, right? If you want to go district-wide, one to three interims, you'll, you'll see examples from other districts, and you'll see how they're able to follow along in the conversation.
Well, and then, I mean, if we are going to choose one grade level, then obviously I think third grade is the, what I would want to look at, a 2% increase in third grade if we didn't, if it wasn't going to be district-wide.
And so then the interims are likely to look like, you're going to be looking at kinder first and second, and you're going to be looking at which outputs are giving you the best predictability as they're, as they're moving up. So then at that point, the board can focus on cohorts as they're moving along. So in other words, the board can start seeing, do we have the systems in place for kindergartners first and second? So by the time they get to third grade, we're not trying to play catch-up at that point. We've already been monitoring our way there. And you also monitor current third grade this year, so that you stay on top of it.
And if, if we did an overall district, or what use, okay.
Thank you for that. So I don't mind getting a data dump, because if I have any questions, I'll just, I'll go through my superintendent and ask questions. But a summary page would be nice. So if you want to do like, hey, this is a district grade, this is great, but if you want to back it up and reference all the other districts, that's something I, again, I personally appreciate. I don't want to see it in a presentation, because I'm going to do my due diligence on a front side, I'm going to, and I'm going to, I'm going to see before, every time you make a presentation, we've all read it. You're, and by the way, thank you for your presentations, because we know a lot of work goes into it. So I want to be respectful there. But when we're doing our job, we do our due diligence, we've already read all of that stuff. But going back to, I don't mind, you know, a summary page, this is what the district looks like, but backup isn't bad either. So, and again, just one individual.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Adams. You're, you're exactly right. You will always have supporting materials. You will also, as you, as you grow and learn in progress monitoring as board members, you'll learn that there's a difference between technical questions, tactical questions, and strategic questions. The strategic questions is what probes the staff to really go dig deep into the data and to bring you factual information. And that, hearing that you do your homework, right? Then that means that when you're submitting questions, like, five to seven days before the board meeting, or worst case, three days, you're giving them time to go and give you the information, that's, that's, that gets rid of the gotcha governance. That creates trust with the superintendent and the leadership team, and they get to bring you information. And you could still ask technical, tactical questions at the board meeting. You also will, will come to respect that the superintendent will say, you know what? Thank you for that question. We don't have that information in front of us right now, and you can expect us to get it to you within X amount of days.
Ms. Mora?
Thank you. So clarity on the data reporting, and I think the formative assessment, because that's where we got a little bogged down last year. So if we do the district-wide, 2%, 3%? I know I've seen from some of the other SOFG districts, they set up kind of a calendar ahead of time, and said that in the month of, of, you know, September, we're going to really take a look at, and that was based on some very specific subgroup, but we could at that point say, this is when we really want to look at kinder through second grade. And we could really look at their CBM data, we could really, you know, ahead of time, we could kind of designate that. Because I think that would help us, because we got really, really, really caught up in what's a formative assessment? What are we looking at? What data are we bringing? And then we got right back to data dumps. We were just bringing way too much stuff. So if we can really narrow that down, I think that's going to help our team tremendously, because we will know, and if there's a specific subgroup, like, we've, we've put a lot of attention into EL. So if we would say that in the month of October, we would really take, like, to take a look at what data do we have that's demonstrating that our EL students who are receiving services are showing growth and movement? Am I correct on that?
You are. And so we'll go back to analogy of the football game. You got four quarters in a game, or a basketball, you know, in a basketball game, too. You, as a board, would ideally look at your, your data quarterly per goal. And, and that means that you know, or how are we doing? Matter of fact, let me put it this way, when you come out of the holidays, you, as a board, are going to be really excited about looking at your data, because that's your halfway point. And you're going to know how, how you're doing. So you shouldn't be surprised at the end of the school year, what, if you're going to win the game or lose the game. In other words, let me go ahead and give you the numbers. I coded your meetings from January to May. You spent 0% monitoring student achievement in January. You spent 12% in February. You spent 2% in February, in March, 0% in April, and 2% in May. And all I'm saying is that the research that I'm sharing with you says that boards that narrow their focus, boards that are spending up to 50% of their time monitoring student achievement, what you monitor is likely to get done. And when you come out of the holidays, this number is going to be much higher coming here in September, October, November, December, because you're going to narrow your focus. It's, it's the, it's the mutual friend of ours superintendent guy, he used to say, a mile wider, an inch deep. You can monitor everything under the sun, but you're only an inch deep. Here in this framework, we're saying, narrow your focus. And you're right, Dr. Hightower, the less goals you have, I don't recommend five, especially in year one. You will stretch your team out, and the board's focus is also going to be stretched out. Get your systems and processes going, strengthen your muscle and governance as board members, move to being an inch wide, but a mile deep. And when you do that, there's no more surprises. You don't know, you don't have to wonder anymore. And when you're engaging your community regularly, you will condition and teach your community what they're supposed to be caring about. And I've shared this with the ones before who did this, and love to share this with the board members who were not able to be there last time. I still always had people say, no, señor, no, pero eso, pero le tenemos confianza a usted, we trust you, sir. And I would tell them, don't trust me. We're at 34% literacy in my town. Don't trust me. And then over the years, that it would still go down, I would say, look at this. And so there are cities around the country who have rid themselves of the common pretending that this can't be done, and they are proving that it's, and there's, there's districts here nearby who are proving that it can be done. You, you believe it, and you, and you prioritize it, and you monitor it, it will get done, because you, as a board, will lead the way. You parallel process. The best example, I'll remind you, I was old, I'm old enough to remember a commercial, dad walks in on a kid who's rolling up something that's illegal at the time, and, and the dad tells the kid, don't do drugs. Do y'all remember what the kid turned around and told the dad? Yeah, I learned it by watching you. You are the leaders that are elected to own your system. I'm telling you, this will clear up so much more. You're going to have a monitoring calendar. You will know when the data's coming. Your community will know when the data's coming. Your educators will be paying attention to when the data's coming out. When you, when you align all systems from the board level, my goodness, you open up so many more opportunities. So create the space, continue to create the space, that how you've gotten here in your own way, in the conversation of data, and how do we get to these goals? If the one thing we walk out tonight with is some agreed-upon goals that you're going to be able to bring for adoption, telling you, you're about to open up the really good floodgates in the way that the data's going to come to you and the way you're going to monitor. And I'm really excited for you, because as a board, I think you're going to start having a lot of fun looking at your student achievement data, because I can already tell, you're not going to beat up on your staff. I can tell. That's a beautiful thing. I think you're going to be asking the questions, how can we support you? But you're also going to be figuring out exactly what inputs are working and which ones are not, and they're going to be honest with you.
So the question, if we are going to look at, oh, my bad. No, 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 you go ahead.
It may not have been reflected in the, in the, in our board meetings, but last year, we started quarterly reports for every single school. So on each quarter, the schools actually reviewed their IEP, what were their highlights, what was their progress to date based on the assessment, and what modifications or changes would they institute and implement for the next, next quarter? So we started that, I'm, I'm sorry it wasn't reflected in, in the board meetings, but that, that process is, at least, we started with that process.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for clarifying that, because I, what I, what I am doing, though, is what, is the reason and the why, how we designed the framework. And for those that don't know, this was 79 of the largest districts in the country who said, we got to do something different, because what we've been doing hasn't been working, because everyone's data looks so similar to each other. So, but it still comes down to, and the board members are going to learn how to code your board meeting, those that are wanting to learn, the officers for sure are going to be exposed to it first. What you spend your time on, time is the most valuable thing that we have. And what you choose as a board to spend your time on here is the message you send to your community that is the priority. So this is a board, this isn't on the leadership team, this is on a district. I mean, I'm, I'm that coach, I'm, I'm going to keep reminding you as a board, if you don't want to own the system and you give up that, that power of it, then, then don't be surprised when you have gaps. But I'm telling you, you set goals and you interview based on your goals, you're clearly communicating to the superintendent what your priority is. But if you lack goals, then there's five different board members. If each one of you have three different school agendas, or like district agendas, that's already 15 different goals. That's what the research shows us, that that's where the politicking comes in with superintendents who got to deal with, like, oh, do I have a majority, do I not? I got to take care of this board member, or maybe that board member. Let's get rid of all of that. Let's bring clarity. You all come to the conclusion of what you want to focus on, and the research is clear, you spent 50% on it, it's going to, it's going to likely get done.
Dude, I have a question, because looking at document two, I know that there are certain demographics, and I'll just, okay, I'll go on page one, since that's like literally right there, where it says, non-full academic year students, there's a jump from 30 to 12. When we do make these goals, since we, it looks like we are going to look at making a very overall goal for across the board, how do we address those particular gaps when we are noticing them within certain demographics? Does that come out in the superintendent interim goals? How can we address that? Because like I said, I mean, 30 to 12%, I don't even know exactly what non-full academic year students means, to be quite honest. Okay, okay. But how, how do we address those needs if we have an area where our, if we look up our students receiving special education from 21 to 22, they were at 6%, and it, it did do a slight dip to 5%? How do we make sure that those gaps are actually being met if we are going to do an overall goal that is not specific to a certain demographic?
So I, I may have misunderstood, I apologize, President Clinton, because if, my recommendation is definitely pick a grade level, because then you can zoom in more and a lot easier. If you do a district-wide goal, it's going to be hard to zoom in, because then each board member may have a different perspective of what they would want to zoom in on. So you do a grade level, you do third grade, I'll share with you other progress monitor reports, but the data will be disaggregated by student groups. So if it's a third grade goal, that slide will be disaggregated. Your interim could be kinder, your first one, that one will be disaggregated. Your second interim may be first, that one will be disaggregated. That allows the board to be not only focused, but be very, very detailed in monitoring that. If you do a district-wide goal, there's so many other variables that come into play. And what you don't want is you don't want, you don't want students to be getting lost in this process. So yeah, let me say clearly, I would recommend a specific grade level, that's, and make it smart. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Quick clarifying question on that. If we, hypothetically went with a grade three goal, as you were saying, what does that look like for a middle school or a junior high who only have seventh and eighth graders? Can you put clarity to that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So most districts have gone with early literacy, early mathematics, and a middle school. So they've got at least three. Some districts have got four goals. So it's two, two in elementary and two in middle. But it's based on what their data told them. And so like, let's say you do eighth grade, then your interims could be fifth, sixth, and seventh. That's how they choose to move forward.
Yes, I would say, keep, keep the 2% for English language charts, and then the 3% for mathematics. But what we're really bringing back in progress monitoring to the governing board would be the third grade.
I'm just confused, because we just listened to our cabinet, who we hired and we respect, and who has probably 100 years of education experience between them, tell us that they thought that what would be best to bring back to our schools was an overall goal, a district goal, that we could all unify behind and work. And then, with respect, a lot less experience, you're not an educator, you're a board coach who has not worked in schools in the way that our cabinet has, or, or our principals have. So to, I, I, I would say, I would like to honor the experience and wisdom of the people in the room who we have placed in these positions, and who are asking us and telling us that what their schools want is an overall goal that they can understand, that they can access. And while maybe that makes our data a little more confusing, and maybe we have more specific smaller goals, I, I'm not comfortable zooming in that close.
So, so I guess along that lines, can we, as a leadership team, set the district goals, but then narrow down what the board would like us to really focus on when we come to do the reporting? So we would still have a district goal that would be set by leadership, so our 2%, 3%, whatever. But then, as a board, you would say, but here's, here's the ones we really want to make sure that we're not leaving behind, based on what we've seen over the years, or in our data, or whatever. And then that would help us focus on what we bring in front of you. Not that you, you know, we couldn't keep you updated on everything else, but that would help us to narrow down on, on what you really want to make sure that we are giving extra attention to, which I think would help our schools, too. When we focused on an EL goal this year, because we saw in our data that year after year after year, we were not reclassifying our students for their language, and we really would needed to get some, some, you know, real strategic efforts in that. That helped the schools really focus on that. That would be an example of a goal that we, we got to narrow in on, but then we could come here and report how we're doing with that, and then along way, give you updates on everything else.
Thank you, Ms. Mora. And I agree 100%. You guys present to us exactly what you believe your goals are going to be. And then, I don't know whether we do it during a governing board meeting, or better not be a study session, but however it is that you communicate to us, and then if we have questions, or we want to, we want to address something in, in particular, then we can have a discussion between our partners. We now have 10 minutes left, and I still, I still believe we need to have 13. We still need to get up.
So what I am hearing is, is this, if we have an overall district goal of 2% ELA, 3% math, the progress monitoring being focused on third grade, because we know an eighth grade to have a middle school, because then it's, third grade, we know if we're improving proficiency, that is going to, we're going to see that through the data as they go through eighth grade, but then they're also going to be set up for more success in their academic trajectory beyond us. And then eighth grade, then we would know when they leave us where they're at, and focusing on, in both math and English, those two grades. They're going to have an overall.
So they're going to do the goals, and they're going to present it to us. Okay. So, okay, back to you.
So I have my, my and our academic goals set. For the superintendent guardrails, my preference would be that it would be two, so I can really progress monitor those. And, and I was looking at Mr. Clayton and what he was doing, and I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, I need to review the data and the investment in the time that you put in, and use that data to come, come back with a recommendation of, of two goals in the superintendent guardrails to progress monitor. But you, you were doing the, the tracking already, Mr. Clayton, of those, of the goals that people in the survey found to be most important?
I, go ahead. So I think for Mr. Adams, guardrails, and I'll be happy to send you some, some reading materials along with them as well. These, these are more or less, what, what do you not want to negotiate in pursuit of the student outcome goals? What do you not want to get lost? And to put it really simple, it's, what are the pain points that you hear from community? What do you get stopped at the grocery store? What do they talk to you about in, in a public setting, or when they call you, or they email you? setting, or when they call you, or they email you? It's 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 to be able to separate what students know and are able to do by student outcome goals. Guardrails is to say, hey, superintendent, we as a board are prioritizing these one to five things. And the reason that they're set up in the in the shall not, it's it's kind of like the Ten Commandments, thou shall not kill. It doesn't say you can kill a little bit. Doesn't say you can kill if this is the circumstance. What happens is, if you do choose to put this in an evaluation for the superintendent, you're being very, very direct as a superintendent, what you want the pain point to be gone. So some folks said security. Well, superintendent gets to get be gets to be really creative with one to three interim measurables in smart format on how she's going to address security. The thing is that she's going to bring these interims to you as a board, and you're going to get to vote up or down. I agree. I think this is the best pathway forward. You minimize the confusion as to addressing the pain points that you as board members are having. The the reason that that's usually what community wants to talk about, they usually don't want to talk about academic achievement, they haven't been conditioned to. So you may have gotten a lot of feedback on the guardrails, because those are the issues that are important to them on a regular basis. I don't like this teacher. I don't like this principal. I don't like the color of the uniform. I don't like the food. Transportation is forgetting to pick up students. You don't want to let that just linger out there. You want to put it in writing, and you want to give her direction on that so she can go take care of it for you as well.
Mr. President Clayton, so one of the things down here, Mr. Adams, is the superintendent shall not neglect the needs of our special education student population. So we don't necessarily, if that's one of the guardrails, we don't really, we will trust her as a professional and, you know, the educator that she is to, then how is she going to address the fact that those needs won't be neglected? And how is that measured in a smart in smart goals? And then when we hear people come and speak to us or not speak to us, and we know that she's addressing those that right? So.
So the slide that shows based on, so document seven, page seven, has the the community feedback. Oh, no, stay on that for the screen, because we don't have them all. Document seven, page seven. One more slide back, Ms. Tucker. So the top five, as you can see, we had 324 responses. The top five on this slide were, the superintendent shall not reduce the time, resources, or opportunities allocated to specials, music, art, PE, or recess to achieve academic goals. And the superintendent shall not allow teacher attrition to increase without addressing underlying issues. Next slide. And then the most feedback we got on this one is, the superintendent shall not overlook the importance of cultural responsiveness, including diversity, inclusion, and belonging in school policies and practice. The superintendent shall not neglect the needs of special education population. And the superintendent shall not fail to ensure transparent, clear, and timely communication with all stakeholders.
Mr. Clayton was looking at the at the survey results, and then he was correlating it to the presentation. My thought on this is that rather than, and that will be up to the governing board, of course, but rather than having these guardrails be part of the evaluation, they could become the goals for performance-based compensation. Because that's something that's a part of the evaluation as well. Separate from the evaluation, but part of it.
I'm good with all that. Again, just a reminder that we had 322 respondents, I think, 324 out of 15,000 families, which, if you add in some of the single parents, is probably 20,000 individuals. So unfortunately, it's hard to, you know, 324 respondents is not really a good snapshot, but it's it's something to look at. Dr. Hightower, if you're comfortable with this, and you think you now have the direction, you have you have the two points for direction, or the goals that are coming from from you guys? Is that is that where? Yeah, I just want to clarify where we're at right now. So because I'm looking five minutes to call for adjournment.
Mr. Mora, did you have a question or comment?
Going back to Dr. Ramos's point with the shall not, I think it's pretty explicit and direct. Under the second bullet on those guardrails, for you, Dr. Hightower, it says, the superintendent shall not allow discipline to be disproportionate between different demographic groups. I've done a lot of work with this. And in the area of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, they use the ratio of 1.25 as a variable rate to ensure that there is going to be disproportionate. They say that that's within the realm of disproportionality. And I think to have a common 1.0 disproportion, a proportion rate for every single demographic group is not, it's going to almost be impossible to attain. So I think it's important to be within the acceptable range that the EEOC provides.
Thank you for that that feedback.
I believe you're saying cross out disproportionate and make it acceptable range. Oh, okay. Discipline to be, shall not allow discipline to be disproportionate within.
I have a question, you know, if we're going to have this conversation five minutes before we're about to start, who does that benefit? Having what is an acceptable range of disproportionality? I want us to answer that question right now, because I can tell you who exactly is going to be targeted by that disproportionality. And is that acceptable to any of you? Whether it's realistic or not, is that acceptable to you? And at the core of it, I genuinely want you to think about our students. How is this going to impact them? What is this thing? Are we saying that it is acceptable to disproportionately discipline our kids? And I don't think that's what we're saying, but what message is that sending?
No, it's definitely not acceptable, Ms. Gosa-Chapa, if I may. And for me, any goals that are set for me for performance-based compensation, it's always to do better and to improve, whether funds are there or not. That's I'm not worried about that at all. I'm worried more about making a difference, so.
Appreciate Mr. Adams keeping of the time. Because what I I went to the restroom, and I came back, and I want to make sure that we're on the, I'm sorry, I wasn't gone very long. I ran into Mr. Morris, not in the same restroom. Anyway, it's been a long day. I didn't run into him. I didn't hurt him. Anyway, okay. So we we're doing the the goals of the 2% to 3%. So we can leave with that, right? And is that something that we vote on as the board?
We'll bring it back to the governing board table.
Okay. And then we're coming up with the the guardrails, possibly the five, based on the information. And I understand it's just a snapshot. I think when we came up with these potential guardrails, we did have the professionals in the in the room, too, who were giving us feedback, you know, when we did it in June last year, or whenever it was, I think. So that's what we're coming up with. And then you're going to bring some guardrails to us, Dr. Hightower, for the board meeting.
Yes, for the governing board to take action. And if I may, suggest that those become the performance-based compensation goals as well. Otherwise, there might be another meeting or study session to come up with those, which I think, given that, given the work that's already been taking place, that makes sense to me, but hopefully it makes sense to the governing board as well.
And I'll just close with this. Sir, thank you very much for your time for being here. Truly appreciate some of the things that you've said really resonate, and I very much appreciate it. Questionary, going back and respectfully, sir, biblically, I get it. But anything that says shall not, I would probably not appreciate. Let's leave it at that.
All right. With all of that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting ends at 7:30. Thank you.